The order of business today is to open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. And I guess I am going to lead the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alrighty, we'll now move to our statement of meeting procedures read by our county clerk.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, September 23rd, 2014. Agendas are available on the wall outside the meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to make action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of the group, now their testifying from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended out of the pleasure of the board. In mind, the chairman has discretion to give me a little discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available.
It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. Ann, we're now move to our, the public comment that Ann talked about. This is the opportunity for the public to come up and speak on any matter that is not on the agenda today. Do you have anybody that needs to make a comment? Please come up, state your name, your address, and it's all, you have the floor.
Thank you Chairman. Good morning Chairman Duran and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Madeline Miller. I'm here on behalf of Roseville Community Preschool and Roseville Community School. We're located on the Placer County Fairgrounds at 50 Corporation Yard Road. And I know you have a packed house and are very busy today with the fire. But we also knew from your last meeting that you're considering the fair revitalization issue at your next meeting and that RCH is finalizing their report. So we just wanted to come introduce ourselves and let you know we're there at the fairgrounds. I have a letter I've submitted today for all of you. It tells you a little bit about our history. Our founder Bev Boss, who is here today, the director of our school, founded the school in 1967. So we've been on the fairgrounds that entire time, almost 50 years. Bev is an internationally and nationally renowned expert in early childhood education. She has written books that are used as textbooks in colleges and universities across the United States and Canada. She's written her own books and produced music CDs. She was featured on 20/20. They did a show all about play-based learning and child-centered education and Bev was the featured person on that show. Our school serves as the model for preschools all across the country. We have many people who come visit and learn about our school and take it back to their own school. It's the place where all of Bev's philosophies are put into action. And I just wanted to tell you a quick story about that. I was, I'm a parent at the school. And it was my weekend to do housekeeping because we all clean the school together. And I walked out with the trash and there were these two women walking by to an event at the fair. And they just stopped and they gasped and they covered their mouths and they said, "Ah, there it is. That is Bev Boss's school. That is Roseville Community Preschool." And they just were so excited and they begged me to come take a peek and don't tell Bev. But I did let them come take a little peek. But it just, it made very clear to me how important our school is, not only to Roseville, to Placer County, to our state, but to our country. She's, I wish, I wish she would tell you all the wonderful things about her, but she won't, so I put them in my letter. So as you continue to consider what you're going to do with the Placer County Fairgrounds, I hope you'll remember us. I understand you're considering forming a fair revitalization committee. And I hope you'll consider us for a spot on that committee. We've been there for so long and understand its history very well. And I think we could make a great contribution to that committee. I think that's it for us. If you have any questions, we're here to answer them. We'd also love to come back to your October meeting if you have questions for us there. And we'd love for you to come tour our school as well. So thank you very much.
Sure. And thank you very much. I am aware that you're there. And I hope you don't take any offense to your not being included in the discussions that we had because that was mostly concerning the facility, facilities out there itself. Before the Board of Supervisors takes any action, we're going to take into consideration the full ramifications of whatever we do on the folks that are there.
Great. Thank you Chairman. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Please come up. And if we have multiple speakers, if you want to get in line, that would be fine.
My name is Deborah Tuhey and I am the owner of Image Pathways, 461 Main Street in Newcastle. I gave you a copy of what I am going to read and I wanted to read it because I want it to be clear as to what it is that we as a community are concerned about. I come before this board representing the citizens for a drug-free Newcastle. With concerns about a smoke shop opening in our Old Town Historic District, I own and operate Image Pathways, a creative arts school. My clientele are children ages five years old and older. I have been in business three years and children come and go on a regular basis. The smoke shop's entrance, only entrance, is 40 feet from my front door. Newcastle is a quiet, family-oriented community with two schools, Newcastle Elementary and Harvest Ridge Charter. Because of parking challenges at both schools, school sites, children approximately third grade to eighth grade will walk up into town and wait for their parents at the Quality Market, Newcastle Produce, Newcastle Pizzeria, and Marshall Square Gazebo, buying goodies and sitting at tables outside the stores. The smoke shop entrance is approximately 100 feet from Quality Market and the front door and the outside tables and chairs that the children congregate at. When talking to local community members, I became clear that the smoke shop is not welcomed in our town. The owner of Auburn Smoke Shop at 1039 High Street has decided to expand into our area.
He's going to validate this.
I went to the businesses that are near the Auburn Smoke Shop and talked to the owners. As I listened to their accounts of how their community has been negatively impacted, I realized that I had to open the door to community discussion as to how we might be able to stop this destructive element from intruding on our special little town. The smoke shop carries a wide range of tobacco products as well as a very large assortment of smoking paraphernalia, including bongs and pipes and items that can be used for drug use. It is displayed on shelves that reach all the way to the ceiling. It is very much in plain sight and very well lit. Here are some of the concerns expressed at our first Citizens for a Drug-Free Newcastle meeting last night. Apparently since the smoke shop opened in Auburn, there has been drastic increase in traffic, bringing in a less-than-desirable clientele into the town, including people described as riffraff, druggies, and junkies. We do not want this in our community. Because food is sold at the store, older children are able to frequent the smoke shop. Even though they may not be able to buy tobacco items, just being exposed to cigars, cigarettes, and smoking paraphernalia glorifies the activity and opens the door to drugs. We have heard that there is going to be a smoking room inside the building. If this is true, then we are concerned about fire safety. The space is attached to four other businesses, including the Newcastle Fire Department. Newcastle is a very old, fragile structure and has been destroyed by fire twice. May I continue?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. There is a huge orange neon smoke sign in the front window of the Auburn location, cigarette posters, and pricing across the lower part of the window. If this is what is planned for the new smoke shop, then this is not what we feel is appropriate for a small town like Newcastle. We are trying to teach our children that smoking is not okay and the behavior when they witness messages, and not okay behavior, and when they witness messages in a family-friendly environment and places that they frequent, they begin to view this behavior as acceptable. If people smoke cigarettes outside the store and sidewalks, then the second-hand smoke is going to travel in all directions, affecting the health of those who are in other businesses and in the town. Cigars are already, are especially offensive and unhealthy to be around. And I've already experienced second-hand smoke with cigar-smoking individuals in town as well as cigarette-smoking construction workers. If this smoking room is inside of a building, can that smoke migrate to other buildings in the area due to structural, due to lack of structural integrity, due to age? I leave you with the most important part, and that is our children. We are concerned for the welfare of the children of Newcastle in many different ways. We choose to live in a quiet, protected community, a community for very good reason, to protect them as long as possible and keep them from being exposed to influences that might bring them harm in any way. A smoke shop is not a healthy influence for anyone, let alone impressionable young people. I come to this board, speaking for a community, pleading for help, especially to you, Mr. Holmes. I ask you to come to Newcastle sooner than later, to make an assessment and help us with a potentially dangerous situation, damaging situation. The smoke shop is not yet open, but the process of getting it ready is well on the way. I run a school. Is there any law in place that prohibits a business which exclusively sells tobacco products and smoking paraphernalia that can be used for drug use also from opening in such close proximity to where our children frequent? As a very concerned community, we are committed to doing whatever it takes to protect these very special children. Please help us come up with options and solutions that can keep our community healthy and safe in every way. Thank you.
Okay. Hold on for a second ma'am. A couple of things. During this period, during this opportunity to bring forward some issues, we cannot make any-
Totally understand.
-any decisions as a board-
I totally understand.
-of supervisors. But what I can do is I can direct you to provide your name and your contact information with my aide Christina Rivera-
Perfect.
-who will therefore direct the planning department as well as code enforcement to kind of, to talk with you and look into-
That's exactly what we are asking. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for bringing this to our attention.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My name is Bill Clark. I'm here representing the Squaw Valley Ski Museum Foundation. You're all very aware of our project, what we've been going through for the last five years now through various studies, concepts, and site struggles and find, trying to find a location for the museum. So I won't go into that. At this point, we have a very simple request for our foundation and the community and all the people that we represent with this history that we're trying to exhibit to celebrate Placer County's role with the 1960 Olympics and being the center of winter sports in the West, that at some point in the very near future, we be given, be given an opportunity to present the situation to the board, have a discussion, a very meaningful discussion. That's the one thing that really hasn't happened in the last several years as we've been going through this project, is we have not had an opportunity to meet directly with the board, make a presentation, have a discussion, do the pros and cons, and thoroughly discuss the situation and see if we can come up with a solution. So that's a simple request at this point. So, that's all I have to say.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Supervisor, could you, okay, great. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, then we'll close public comment and we'll move on to supervisor committee reports. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to let you know that my staff is already involved in discussions with the planning department about the issue that Ms. Tuhey is talking about.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Holmes, anyone else? Seeing none, we will move to our consent agenda.
Move approval.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Does anybody want to pull, pull anything off of the agenda first? Anyone in the public want to do that? I guess not. Okay, we have motion, second. Roll call vote.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Weigant? Holmes? Euler? Duran?
Yes. Great. Now we are going to move to our first timed item. Well, actually, it's not a timed item, but it is our county executive emergency services proclamation for a local emergency on the King Fire. I'll go ahead and call up Brad Harris and also our information officer for Cal Fire, Jack Horner. Is that right? Great.
Well, actually, the Forest Service is going to be doing a presentation here very shortly about the progress that they're making on the, the King Fire. From a county and from a Cal Fire perspective, I'd kind of like to give you a quick update where we are. Our involvement with the fire has been one of more of a agency representation, making sure that we're reducing the impacts on our communities first of all, and second of all, reducing the impacts on our private landowners that exist within the national forest. The fire right now is in, in the Placer County side, is entirely on the El Dorado and Tahoe National Forest. We are in close communication with them, will remain in close communication with them. I'm a great deal more comfortable today, even though we have predicted strong southwest winds than I was a week ago after the fire made a tremendous run, 50,000 acres, 15 linear miles in the matter of a couple hours. Just phenomenal fire behavior that occurred along the Rubicon River, which separates El Dorado and Placer County. So, once that occurred, we've had people out looking at the fire, making sure that it's not going to position itself so they could either threaten the communities of Forest Hill or the communities contained within the Tahoe Basin. There are some, some projections that we're looking at to make sure that they don't come true. But again, those projections are very minor possibilities of these, this fire entering into our communities. The only piece I'm really keeping a close eye on right now is right at the Rubicon River itself. It's a very difficult drainage to, to get equipment and hand crews into. So the Forest Service is working very diligently to, to close off that sectional line. Once that sectional line is closed off, it's going to alleviate any potential fire runs going into Forest Hill. At the head of the fire between Hell Hole and French Meadow reservoirs are doing good work in, in containing that. But I don't want to steal their presentation, so I believe John Mackeldowney has the presentation for the emergency declaration itself.
Thank you Brad.
Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. My name's Jack Horner. I'm the, one of the public information officers with the California Incident Management Team on, out of Forest Hill. I also have with me two other public information officers to help with any questions that might come up, and they are Jane LeBeau and Kelly Pavlica. We also have the district ranger here, Victor Lyon for the American River, and the public affairs officer from the Tahoe National Forest, Michael Woodbridge. The, as you can see on the map here, let's see if I can operate your electronics appropriately. Now, it's kind of hard to see, but the clicker here, but the size of this fire is almost the same size as Lake Tahoe. And so it was divided into two zones to help from a logistics standpoint. So the north zone, or what we're calling Zone One, is now being managed by the California Incident Management Team, which is a federal firefighting team. Zone Two, out of Placerville, is being managed by the Cal Fire Incident Management Team, also number five. So if you say Team Five, you're right on the King Fire. The fire itself is up to, as of this morning, we have updates that we've given you out, but they are last, from last night. We apologize, the new ones for this morning won't be out until another hour or so. But the fire is up to eighty seven, 89,574 acres. We have 7,388 people, personnel on the fire, working on this thing. So very large. The good news is we've gone from 18% containment all the way up to 35% containment. What that means is where you see red fire line up here, as we get a line around that thing, the, the image, the red turns to black. Some of that is direct line, some of that is indirect line, where it's unsafe to get our firefighters into those locations. So we're working, working around those locations. As Brad talked a little bit about the spot fire up between just east of, of the French Meadows Reservoir, and that thing, we've just about got a line completely around, around that. Night before last, we had a, a infrared flight and we found two more small spot fires in that same area. Crews went out yesterday and mopped, located those things on the ground, mopped them up, and so those are in good shape. They had heli, heavy helicopters dropping water on the, on that, that big 350-acre spot yesterday. So they're, they're feeling real confident, like Brad was saying. There is a line now all the way across between those two reservoirs to hopefully keep the fire from moving north, northeast between those, those two reservoirs. There's only, like Brad was saying, the Rubicon area where the split between the Zone One and Zone Two comes in. On the, on the west side of that, there's a little bit of concern and, and they're working on that, trying to make sure that we get a strong line in there. On the east side, in Zone Two, just at that zone break, there's also a little pooch-out area that, that they are working on. Zone Two folks are working on to try to make sure that that hole's in place. And as we continue on, they, like I said, they are feeling really confident that things are going good. Brad mentioned the winds that are predicted for today and tomorrow. They are, our weather forecast is saying that this afternoon, those, we could have wind, we could have winds come in and lasting up through tomorrow afternoon. So we are, we are, what we're doing is we're trying to hold public meetings around the communities to let people know and just give people an idea of what is going on, what we have in place. Those winds will test our lines that are in there, and we fully expect that they will hold in place. And let's knock on wood so that, so that they will. We're having a public meeting to, tonight, we're going to the Truckee Town Council at 6:00 PM and do the same type of presentation as here. Then we'll move, the incident commander and I will move on to Squaw Valley and do a public community meeting there. Tomorrow evening, we're going to do a 7:00 PM community meeting in Forest Hill. And then we also have another incident commander go to the other side again and do a public meeting at 7 o'clock also at Tahoe City. So we're trying to make sure that we're getting the word out around. Also, there will be a call center that's being set up today in the district ranger's office in Truckee that will help with share, share information on the fire. So people on that side of the fire will be able to get to that phone, phone line if they can't get to us over here. There's, there's two good sources of information and we always tell people about the NSAWeb site, and you guys are not new to fire, you've had many fires through here, so you're probably aware of the nsaweb.nwcg.gov site where you can find out the latest information on fires. But what we're finding with social media is Facebook, which we're updating on just about a daily basis with instant pictures, not a daily basis, how about, how about an hourly basis? New pictures, new information, anything that's, that's coming about, you'll find it on there under King Fire. Any questions that we could answer?
Any questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Mr. Horner, I just wanted to say thank you to you and all your crew for being so responsive, particularly as it relates to the community meetings in the east end of the county. My phone's been ringing off the hook all hours of the day and night with people just very concerned about being able to make sure we get updated information. There's a lot of bad information out there. It's my one caveat about social media.
Yes.
Make sure if you're following on social media, that you are following sites that have real, appropriately sourced information. There's a lot of very bad information out there tonight, and I think these community meetings will help put a lot of that to rest. So my thanks again.
All right. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you very much. Great.
Morning Chairman Duran, supervisors. My name's John Mackeldowney, program manager with the Office of Emergency Services. Today, I'd like to request that the board adopt a resolution proclaiming a local emergency in Placer County due to the King Fire. Before I do that, I'd just like to add on to what Mr. Horner had to say on the, on the community meeting tonight in Squaw. I'll give the address out for those who are listening. It's 1909, it's at Olympic, Olympic Village Lodge at 1909 Chamenee Place in Olympic Valley. And representatives from the incident management team, as he discussed, will be, will be there to answer any questions. So I think he pretty much covered the background of the fire. So I'd just like to add a couple of things in terms of where the fire is. There's quite a fit, a bit of major infrastructure associated with the Placer County Water Agency's Millford Project in this area. So unless there's any questions for me, that concludes and I'd like to request a adoption of the resolution.
Yes, I have a question. Could you explain the method or the means behind the actual resolution? I mean, we normally just don't pass resolutions. There's a, there's a reason why we do it. Could you briefly?
Yeah. So the resolution essentially, it'll, it's an emergency proclamation, and what it's going to do is allow the director of emergency services, David Bosch, who I'm working very closely with, to actually have some more essential, more powers in terms of how we direct the fire or our actions as a county, how we go about dealing with the fire within Placer County.
And it also provides us the opportunity to recoup-
Yes, and that's probably, thank you very much Chairman. That's a big deal. It allows us the possibility of, of getting CDAA, California Disaster Assistance, for the potential for having that come into the county as well. So, and it also would allow the governor, if he so chooses, to also declare a proclamation or emergency proclamation for the county.
Hopefully this will get on his radar.
Exactly.
Any questions or comments by the board supervisors? Okay.
Move approval of the item.
We have motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing done? No extension? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chairman Duran, if I can, just before we finish with this particular item, I'm hoping that everyone who is listening or watching online and everyone here in the audience takes the opportunity to join our notification system through the EverBridge program. That is www.placeralert.org. And you may or may not need a dash between the words Placer and alert. That will take you to a website where you can sign up a number of phones that you can be contacted on, and you can put in a number of different addresses. So for example, I put in my home address here, the domes, and where my husband works, so that if there are any emergency notifications revolving around any of those three addresses, they will come to me through text and through phone calls. I strongly encourage everyone to do that. It's just a good precautionary measure.
And if I could-
Yes.
Sorry, one more thing.
Sorry.
If I could just add on that the EverBridge will, all the information will be posted where the various community meetings are on our Placer County website as well, if that hasn't already gone up. So that's another good source of information. And also our public information team, their number is posted on there as well. It's 886-5310.
Great. And we're not done with this yet. I did want, want to provide an opportunity, if they wanted to speak, Dr. Oldham, did you want to make some comments about the status of the air quality or health, health-related issues?
Sure. Good morning. Thank you Chairman Duran, members of the board. Yeah, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes this morning. I know there's been a lot of questions about the air quality. Obviously, this morning in Auburn, we were experiencing some diminished air quality. Just really, three critical points I wanted to talk about. One is the fine particulate matter that we're monitoring and sort of what are the health consequences of that versus what are just some of the, the comfort issues? So a lot of us are experiencing, you know, symptoms that are uncomfortable right now that probably are not tied to any type of long-term health consequences. What we are concerned about is when the levels of this particulate matter, the fine particulate matter gets so high, especially for sensitive groups, but even other people who don't have underlying health conditions can begin to develop some health problems in the short term. So we're monitoring that very closely. One of the things, information to get out, people, we're accessing the, so the Air Pollution Control District has a fabulous website where you can go on and the public can go on, as well as people like school administrators and folks who are running sporting events, et cetera, can look at the status of the air quality currently. But we also look at the 24-hour air quality, so looking at the average of, of those quality, air quality monitors that we have set up throughout Placer County. And we can average those out because it's not just what the air is like right now, but the last 24 hours. So that helps to determine kind of the dose of particulate matter that a person is exposed to over the last 24 hours. So those are the two things that we're really looking at. And that went into some of the decisions that we made, the recommendations about things like school closures and event closures are based on those two things. Luckily, we have had a meeting with the superintendents and with the Air Pollution Control District, and we came to- and we came to some starting consensus guidelines that we're starting, using to make decisions about school closures, event closures, sporting events, that sort of thing. So I think it's helping us to make decisions more quickly and to communicate that out to our stakeholders and the public. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
If there are sporting event closures or, how soon would we know about this?
So it, and it, I guess it, it always depends, and so it depends on the, the current condition as well as kind of the way things have been. One of the things, so the Air Pollution Control, specific to school-related sporting events, is going to be sending out updates with data to the Superintendents twice a day, so at 10 o'clock and 4 o'clock. So the 10 o'clock data will inform the afternoon sporting events, which I think will be very useful. And then the, like, the 4:00 PM data can also give us more of an estimate, like on looking back at the, the 24-hour averages to make decisions about the next morning. But then, like this morning, some of us were up early to try, to look at, so we have the 24-hour data, but we also have to look at what, what is the air quality currently before the buses get going, et cetera. But on the, on the sporting events in, in general, we'll, those are held in the afternoon, at least during the week, in football games, et cetera, in the evenings. So we have, in the morning, we're able to get together and make some of those decisions for the afternoon.
Great. I think we have a couple of questions of the Board. Kirk?
Actually, my, my question is for OCW.
Okay, great. Gentlemen?
Thank you for the report, and I, I really, I see Tom Kristof, head of our Air Pollution Control District, in the back of the room. I wanted to thank the Air Pollution Control District particularly for your work in Tahoe and helping the Iron Man reach their own decision about whether or not to put that event on. But the Air Pollution Control District, in case the Board isn't aware, did manage to get some temporary air monitoring, air quality monitoring stations in Squaw Valley and in Forest Hill, which are not normal monitoring locations for us, and that's been very, very helpful in this process, in being able to get a larger region-wide view of what is actually going on where, in a real-time basis. So really, just wanted to take the opportunity to say thank you for that. And thanks to our own Health and Human Services Department for working with our partners, both public and private, to help them make their own decisions about whether these events go on or not, because it's not actually our call. We can't tell them not to do these things, but we can give them our very best advice. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanted to also thank a lot of our partners. You mentioned the Air Pollution Control District, and Tom and his staff have really been fabulous in getting us data to make, you know, recommendations. Our partners with the school systems, with sporting events, and Nevada County, particularly their public health, we've really partnered on some of the messaging and decisions about, you know, schools up in Tahoe Truckee, et cetera. So I really appreciate everybody.
Thank you, Doctor. Tom, did you want to say anything? Nothing? Okay. I see our Executive Director of Placer County Water Authority here. David, did you want to have a couple of words, a couple of comments that you wanted to make?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Board, Dave Brennan, your General Manager of Placer County Water Agency, and with me today are several others of our agency. In a few moments, I know Director Dugan, on behalf of our Board, would like to share some thinking with you. First, I'd like to just make some really fine comments to the staff of the county. David and John have been extraordinary to work with, and it's good to see our friends and colleagues, many of whom live here in our area, Joan, for example, Chief Harris, others, the American River and Forest District, the Tahoe National Forest, and the Georgetown Divide District of the Old Dorado. It's like family when we're unfortunately all called together like this in the front row. We all do know how to anticipate a fire, and it's been gratifying to know that unfortunately things went, as was referred to, and with the, the sweep of the wind last week, and as you're all alluding to, the smoke. We've long lived with the aftermath of the fires. Our retired employees, as well as our current employees, and historically, we tend to have very good information on the trends of what's going to happen in our area. We're real proud of being a partner with the county itself and the agency on our Middle Fork Project, and we're always looking upon not only the fixed assets, we have two residential units up at Hellhole and a large facility where many times people work out of, because at the end of the road, at Hellhole is the end of the road, as you get into the Sierra Nevada from Forest Hill. What we'd like to just take a moment to share with you, because the work you've heard is phenomenally being done, communicating, and is very important, and air quality is critically important, but the watershed is near and dear to the hearts of the agency and I know of the county. With that, we have a message we'd like to share with you.
Director Dugan?
Thank you. Chair, members, thanks for the opportunity. I'll be brief, and certainly first and foremost, public health and safety and welfare, and is critical in a fire. And the fire crews, we just need to make sure we thank CAL FIRE, our Forest Service, and all the crews that are coming from all over the country to help us get to the numbers that we've had to work on this fire. So important thank you to them, both individually and collectively. I also want to thank your staff, because as Dave referenced, working with County OES and all the related staff, I won't mention all the departments, because I'll forget one, has been tremendous over the last couple of weeks. We wanted to assure you that we're focused on what happens after the fire and what are the public policy and public health and safety and public welfare impacts after the fire. Just wanted a quick reference, we've been working with PG&E to make sure that we're ready to remediate any impacts to the power supply system and the water supply system for Placer County and the rest of the state that's served by our water system as we look at this situation. The teams have been great at protecting the majority of our power infrastructure up above the Hellhole and French Meadows area, but as we move out of the fire, we're going to need to work with our Forest Service folks who know how to remediate a fire. We're going to, we're going to need to work with them to make sure that we can maximize restoration efforts. We're going to need your help to partner with our Forest Service folks at the local level to make sure they have the resources, because as, as much as I don't have to remind you, we're in a drought, we're talking about fire today, but the fire's having a dramatic impact on how we're going to be able to handle the drought next year, how we're going to be able to handle snow load, how we're going to handle all those things. And while our local folks at the local Forest Service know what needs to be done, getting them the resources is going to take a team effort. So I, I just wanted to make sure I reference that and, and put that notch in there, because as soon as this fires out, we're already working and we'll be back to you asking for help so that we can get the teams on the ground, the resources, they need to do what they know needs to be done, so we can address those important infrastructure issues. So that's all I had, and I just thank you for the opportunity.
Great. Supervisor, you're up.
Actually, I was going to ask two questions. One was, what's the current status for our infrastructure? And then the second was, what are we planning to do after the fire is out in restoring our watershed? You addressed them both, so thank you.
So I'll, I'll give you one more sentence on where do we stand with current infrastructure. We did lose, I believe it was a 60 KV line coming out of French, out of Hellhole Reservoir, but the fire crews have been able to preserve that fire line along the northwest side of the fire, which has prevented the fire from encroaching into the 230 KV line and several other powerhouses, which would have been pretty significant. I know that PG&E and Placer County has already got their plans, they're already bringing in polls, they're already doing assessments where they can, when they're told by the fire crews that it's safe to go check things out, but they're stockpiling the resources necessary to get distribution systems back up in partnership with our agency, they're using our yard. You know, we have a strong partnership with PG&E, as you know, to protect our mutual interests with the Middle Fork area and all the power that goes with it. So everybody's mobilizing, we'll let you know what we need, but it's important to acknowledge that once they get done taking care of us and protecting us, we're going to need to support them as they try and make sure they do what's necessary in the forests that are burned to make sure that they're ready for the winter and ready for, for water capture. And we're protecting from the ecological disaster of, of runoff and sediment that we know is going to hit the rivers. And as much as on one hand, that's an environmental issue, it also significantly affects our, our water supplies, and that's where we're linked at the hip, why, why we're such a great partner with that environmental community in that regard. And again, we've got lots of experts that'll know what needs to be done, we just need to make sure we help them get the resources to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. All right, we will now move on to our 9:05 AM Board of Supervisors timed item, and that is a commendation to honoring Rui Cunha, the Assistant Director of Emergency Services, and his dedicated service to Placer County. And that is Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you, Chairman Duran. Can't really think of a better segue than what we've just had, honestly. It's been my pleasure, before I read the commendation, it's been my pleasure to work with Rui for five and a half years, almost six years, but I have actually known him longer than that, because he's worked with my husband, who is a firefighter in the east end of the county, through my husband's employment and through our hazardous materials team for longer than that. So Rui's been a fixture in the Montgomery Gomez household for many, many years, and it's truly my pleasure to be able to read this today, because Rui's just delightful. So I hope I don't cry when I read this, Rui.
This is a commendation for Mr. Rui Cunha, September 23rd, 2014. In the matter of a commendation honoring Rui Cunha for his leadership as Assistant Director of the Office of Emergency Services for more than 12 years. Whereas Rui was hired as the Program Manager for the Placer County Office of Emergency Services, OES, in October 2002, after retiring with 22 years of service from the United States Army as a Lieutenant Colonel. And whereas Rui utilized his extensive leadership development and training experience from the military to elevate the standards of service expected of emergency services personnel in a manner that secured the public trust while protecting the integrity of Placer County. And whereas, as a result of his performance as a leader, Rui was promoted to Assistant Director of Emergency Services with the full force and powers bestowed upon him in times of a local, of a declared local or state emergency to secure personnel, equipment, and resources to effectively respond to the emergency. And whereas, Rui modeled his core values of selfless service, loyalty, honor, and integrity in his daily activities. And whereas, Rui was born into a military family and moved extensively throughout his life, but has considered Placer County his home since 1970, when his family first moved here. Rui graduated from Roseville High School, enlisted in the Army in 1976, and was accepted into West Point in 1978. Rui graduated from West Point with a BA in Science and a minor in Business Management, receiving his commission in 1982, where he served as an officer until his retirement in August 2002. And whereas, described by many of his peers as, quote, "A voice of calm deliberation during the chaos of emergencies, always able to find the sublime notwithstanding the circumstances." Under the most serious conditions, Rui would always find something positive or funny to focus on, and no matter what others were doing or saying, Rui would maintain an objective place of perspective and resoluteness that brought calm to his coworkers and others," unquote. And whereas, through his tenure with Placer County, Rui helped to coordinate emergency relief and services to secure the public safety in multiple incidents, ranging from flood to fire, sewage spills, propane explosions, an H1N1 influenza scare, a West Nile virus outbreak, and a tanker fire that threatened the entire city of Lincoln. When asked what he is most proud of, Rui responded, quote, "It has been an honor to be with people who live and work in a county that has a 'roll up your sleeves and get it done' attitude to help one another," unquote. Now therefore, let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors congratulates Rui Cunha on his retirement with sincere thanks for his dedication and combined 34 years of public service to respond in emergencies for the welfare of our country, county, and communities, and with best wishes for a long and healthy retirement. Rui, congratulations on your retirement.
Sorry, I'm crying. This is yours.
Thank you. It's incredible.
And we need Linda here as well. Much more important than me in these photos, come on, oh, all right. All right, Linda, get up here.
I truly better act.
Eight minutes left.
Excellent. Thank you.
Rui, it would be honored to give you the credit.
This, this is incredible. I, I'm, I, you know, I'm never at a loss for words, but I am at a loss for words right now. I, I want to thank all of you for, for this, it, it means a lot, there's no question about it. But, but what I know is, I know that through all of those years of service, I, I was very, very fortunate to work with incredible people around me, incredible public servants, whether it was the hundreds, literally hundreds of county employees that, that did just that, rolled up their sleeves every time that we needed them to roll up their sleeves from virtually every department in this county, quite frankly, who saw any time that the county needed it, any time that we're, there was peril in front of our residents, saw an opportunity to make things a little better on behalf of our communities. I was very fortunate to have that opportunity. Also, the various agencies and cooperators that I've worked with through the years, same thing, they all had that same culture, that same attitude in Placer County. It's something we can, we can't take for granted, we cannot take for granted that the culture of public service in Placer County, it is an important culture and it makes such a big difference when there are times such as this. So again, I want to thank you. I want to finish by thanking my team, John and, and Rod and Heidi and Dorothy, because they've done a wonderful job. There's nothing better as a public servant than to manage yourself into irrelevance, and that's exactly what I've done. And, and, and that's, that's a beautiful thing. There is nothing better than to hand off an important function like the Office of Emergency Services and have it continue to function the way that it's supposed to be, regardless of the fact that I'm there. And then, and then as far as calm, those who've worked with me on the budget before probably would have a different, different take on the calmness. And so there were many evenings that I went home a little bit excited because of budgets and budget discussions, and, and I was very fortunate to have my wife Linda, who fundamentally talked me down time and time again because of the times working through the budgets. So again, I'm, I'm immensely humbled by this, Jennifer. Thank you so much, and I want to thank all of you for the leadership that you've shown in those times of peril, and, and please just keep that up. This is a great place to be and a great place to work and live. Thank you.
Great. Do we have comments from the? Rui, I think we have a couple of comments here. Robert?
Yeah, first of all, Ray, from a Lincoln High School kid to a Roseville High School kid, you turned out unexpectedly well. Sorry, Jack.
Seriously, that was a joke. Seriously, it's been a real pleasure, Rui, what most people, your timing, by the way, of the King Fire is just remarkable.
The fire started before, I mean, after I retired, after I retired.
But it's moments like this with the King Fire and the Glanning Fire before that and the tanker fire in Lincoln that was so exciting, but, but it's really the day-to-day work that people don't realize in the Office of Emergency Services prepares us to react to these things well. So it's the work, for example, with regards to funding the fire protection out at the Sunset Industrial Area with the United Auburn Indian Community and all the work and details that go into that, and the collaborative work that's required with Brad's department and bringing forward good budgets that we can sustain, and, and working with fire districts that need help and a higher level of management, and you've done an extraordinary job with all of that and been very visionary in your efforts, and it's been fun working with you and a pleasure, and the results, I think, are something that we can all be proud of. So I hope you enjoy your retirement and... Sunset Industrial Area with the United Auburn Indian Community and all the work and details that go into that and the collaborative work that's required with Brad's Department and bringing forward good budgets that we can sustain and, and working with fire districts that need help and a higher level of management, and you've done an extraordinary job with all of that and been very visionary in your efforts, and it's been fun working with you and a pleasure, and the results I think are something that we can all be proud of. So I hope you enjoy your retirement and, and say hello every now and then.
I will. Thank you. Thank you very much, Robert.
Supervisor Holmes?
Rui, I just want to thank you for your wise counsel. As I came on the board, we've had issues with different fire districts, and I think we're working well getting through those, but I couldn't have done it without your being there and giving me some guidance and working together to make sure that we're doing the best fire protection that we can in the county. So thank you, and I wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you, Jim.
Supervisor Ulller?
Well, clearly, your prominence is gained when we have incidents like this and you have to stand up in front of us and television cameras and all the rest and talk about that, but the, the real management, the heavy lifting is what, what Jim just referred to, and that is the ongoing preparation in advance of these kinds of incidents. And I was talking with somebody about your retirement and about all of the different emergencies that you've had to manage through, and they asked, you know, kind of a, for instance, I said, "Well, for instance, every other Tuesday, we provide him a disaster opportunity up here that he gets, he gets to help work us through." So, but, but helping us with the complex negotiations associated with providing the, the ongoing fire management services throughout this county, that, that had to be the toughest role regardless of the, the ups and downs of the emergencies, and I appreciate the way that you played that role. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Kirk.
I don't know if I can top any of those, Rui, so I'm going to conclude by just saying thank you for your service to the county, and I wish you and Linda the ultimate wonderful retirement.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you very much. Thank you, David.
Um, oh, I guess, okay, okay. We will now move on to our 910 Board of Supervisors timed item, and this is a commendation to recognize Jane Goulding for more than 40 years of service to the citizens of Placer County. I'm going to go ahead and read this commendation. Whereas Jane has been a creative, conscientious, and devoted employee of the Placer County Auditor Controllers Office for more than 40 years and is deserving of special recognition for her loyal service. Whereas Jane began employment with Placer County in June of 1973, I think I was six or seven years old at that time, as a school summer help for three months, returned as the Auditor Controllers Office, to the Auditor Controllers Office in April of 1974, and graduated as valedictorian in June 1974 with a 4.0 from Placer High School. A GPA she maintained while attending college at night to earn her AA in accounting. Whereas Jane repeatedly promoted over her career within the county and specifically the Auditor Controllers Office to become the managing accountant/auditor of the Property Taxes Division, a division she still manages to this day with unbridled enthusiasm. And whereas Jane has served on the Property Tax Manager Subcommittee of the State Association of County Auditors since its inception in 1987, where she consistently demonstrated the ability to easily learn and understand property taxes and deal with new and difficult situations. Whereas Jane has never wavered in her attempts to support staff to improve all aspects of the Auditor Controllers Office, now therefore let it be known that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Jane Marie Goulding for her dedicated service and wishes her a long and enjoyable retirement. Jane?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And you'd like to say a few words? Okay. You have some more pictures?
More pictures, more pictures.
Jane, Andy, you want to?
Say a couple of words?
Yes. I figure 40-plus years of service, I better say something. Boy, when I joined the county, Jane was a mystery to me. I didn't know much about Jane. I knew Kathy, I knew Dave Irwin, Jose, everybody knew Jose. And the recent hire, Carol McNeely, I even knew Carol McNeely better than I knew Jane when I started from my workings as the outside auditor, working on DPW audits. But I quickly learned that Jane was not going to let me forget about her when I joined as the assistant. And at that time, when I joined, she was not only managing property taxes, she was managing payroll, she was managing warrants, she was managing the technical unit. So she had a lot going on in the office, and the Auditor's Office was in a state of transition at the time, and she was one of the managers that really stepped it up and took on more than probably she needed to. And of course, times kind of changed, but really, her passion was always about property taxes. So much so, so much so, that when the redevelopment agencies decided to dissolve, she prolonged her retirement because of the accounting excitement that she was going to get because of all the complexities involved in dissolving these redevelopment agencies. And this is for someone that already had a feather in her cap because she did all the accounting pre-Improp 13 back in 1978. So now she has another feather in her cap, that she got to see the creation and the demise of the redevelopment agencies during her career. No doubt, it's, boy, the commendation's very nice, it's very well said. I mean, definitely Jane has earned the trust of all the coworkers and subordinates and superiors in her office. She's been an ardent sounding board for people. She's imparted wisdom, been a great leader, and made a difference, especially with someone like me. I mean, I would read her evaluations, and I was always taken aback by words I didn't know what they meant. I was like, "What does that word mean? That can't be a real word." And it forced me to go into the dictionary and look up the word so I could figure out what it meant. And then when I did her last evaluation, I decided that I would throw some words in there. I went into the dictionary to try to find some words that I could use, and the word I found was virtuoso, that Jane was a virtuoso in property taxes. And to this day, I don't know if she had to look it up herself. My guess is not because of her 4.0 grade point average at Placer High. When Kathy and I talked about having a future Assistant Auditor Controller, Jane was the most logical choice. She clearly had a pulse on all of the office operations and had many of the same qualities as one of her prior mentors and the prior Assistant Auditor Controller, Yvonne Baske. No doubt she could do the job. And while most people would have taken that promotional opportunity prior to retirement, Jane felt that it was in the best interest of the office and the county to move in a different direction and develop another person into that Assistant Auditor Controller position. And I always wondered why, was, because I always knew about Jane, it wasn't about the money. When I asked her again, "Why did you make that decision?", she clearly stated, "As the Assistant Auditor Controller, I would not have been able to spend 100% of my time and energy on what I love the most, property taxes." Thank you for making this happen today.
Thank you.[1028.13][1028.13](applause).
Please, come on.
Well, thank you very, very much. Thank you, Board. David, Jerry, Andy. I started working for the Auditor's Office when I was 16 years old, and I spent a few years working in most areas of the office, and in 1979, they put me in property taxes. I went kicking and screaming. I threatened to leave and go get a job as a waitperson. It was a very stressful area, but it didn't take me long to embrace it, love it. I believe it's the most complex, challenging, ever-changing area in the office, and I absolutely love my job. And it's going to be really hard to retire, I'm going to miss it terribly, and I'm very grateful. I've been able to work for the Auditor's Office all of these years, and I am honored to have been able to work for Placer County. So thank you.
Great. Great, I appreciate it.[1095.28][1095.28](applause). Supervisor Montgomery?
Jane, I just wanted to take the opportunity to say, I can't believe you were 16 because if Chairman Duran was six or seven, I would have sworn you were an infant when you started. But I really want to thank you for your many years of service. You and I have not worked closely together on, on many issues, but I will tell you that what I hear from your fellow employees here at Placer County throughout all departments is that you are absolutely dedicated, you are excellent at what you do, and that your loss will be deeply felt at Placer County. So all my best to you. Enjoy whatever the heck it is you want to go do with all your spare time now, but if you really do want to stay, I'm sure we could arrange something. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And Jane, I did want to comment that I do have a forensic accounting facet of my private practice, and I do share that enthusiasm for what you're going to find when you get into those numbers. So, so, so I can appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.[1168.83][1168.83](applause).
All right. We'll now move to our 920 timed item. This is Facility Services, Annexation of Lynch Property to County Sewer Maintenance District 3. Mr. Bell?
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of your Board. I'm Kevin Bell, I'm the Environmental Engineering Program Manager in Facility Services. I'm here this morning to request your Board hold a public hearing to consider annexation of parcel 037111001000 into Sewer Maintenance District 3. The parcel is located on Peach Drive near Horseshoe Bar Road and Auburn-Folsom Boulevard. Marshall Lynch is requesting annexation of the parcel to connect to Public Sewer, and it's a 1.17 acre parcel. If approved, the applicant will be required to pay the annexation fee in effect at the time that they choose to make payment. The current fee is $4,400 per potential lot, which in this case is two potential lots, for a total of $8,800 plus a recording fee paid to the state. Staff supports this request, and the action I have for you is to hold a public hearing and at the end of the hearing adopt the resolution that's included in the staff report, annexing parcel 037111001000 into SMD 3. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions your Board has.
Any questions of the Board? I don't see any. Any questions of the public? Okay. Then I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak on this item? I guess not. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll go.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? No abstention, hearing none, the motion carries.
Supervisor Ulller is absent.
Oh, yes, Supervisor Ulller is absent in the vote, so it's a 4-0.
Not present.
All righty. Great. We are, we will now move to our 945 timed item. This is Placer County Peace Officers Association Appeal Hearing. For purposes of procedure, I'm going to turn this over to Jerry Carden to kind of take us through the, through the exercise.
As you can see in the staff report, the parties have stipulated to a, a procedure for presentation of this appeal. In a conference call with counsel for the parties, it was agreed that there would be a minor adjustment to that procedure to allow the issues to be presented and addressed separately so that the parties will first take up issue number one, whether the petition was properly filed under the county employer/employee relations policy. The process will be the petitioner will have, present their opening position on the issue, then the county position will be presented, then speakers for each side will be presented by, by those sides with a maximum amount of time of five minutes per speaker. Then the matter will be opened to the public, where public comment at three minutes per speaker will be allowed. At that point, there'll be closing statements from the parties, first from the petitioner, then the county position, and then the petitioner will have the last word. And then it'll be, come back to the Board for a decision on issue number one. If the Board finds that the petition was not properly filed, then the hearing will be concluded because that's the threshold issue in the case. If the Board finds that the petition was properly filed, then we'll move on to issue number two, whether the proposed unit is an appropriate unit for this employee group, and it will follow the same process in the presentation of that issue.
So just for the sake of brevity, we've got opening statements, we've got Q and A, then we've got public comment, then we've got closing statements on item one.
Yes.
Okay, great. Then we'll go ahead and start the hearing with the appellant. Please take the podium. And our clerk is going to take track of the time, I guess?
Is there a time?
Yeah, sure. And to both parties, if you don't need to take your full 20 minutes, don't feel obligated.[1444.33][1444.33](laughter).
Good morning, Commissioner Duran and members of the Board. My name is Brendan Parenti with Mistagney Law Firm, and I'm here on behalf of Placer County Peace Officer Association. For the sake of brevity, I'll refer to them as the Association for the remainder of this hearing. We're here today to ask the Board to address and overturn the county's decision that the petition was not properly filed and that the unit determination, or the unit was not The Association, in the month of February during the proper window period, filed a petition to create the Placer County Peace Officer Association. It would be made up of a majority of correctional officers, correctional sergeants, and then probation officers in the classifications, including field and institution. Of the approximately 196 members in those units, 144 signed the petition to leave PPEO and create their own association and their own units to be properly represented and have their interests looked after. These, the petition was filed in accordance with everything required under Sections 10 and Section 9 of the Employer/Employee Relations Policy. The county denied the petition initially on a timeliness and proper form of the petition grounds. Initially, they stated that the petition was refiled beyond the February timeframe. This is an incorrect characterization of what had occurred. The petition was properly filed on February 28th. It unfortunately was the last day of the window period, but I'm sure you can all understand it's a lengthy process and requires time to put together, but it was nonetheless filed within the proper time. After that, the county requested a clarification. The clarification was provided to the county beyond the window period, but it was in no sense a re-filing of the initial petition. It was a response to a clarification that was requested. Therefore, the petition was properly filed within the February window period. Furthermore, the county argues that it was not properly filed because it was within six months of a new MOU being created. However, at the time that it was filed in February of 2014, there was no MOU. There was no MOU in action between PPEO and the county. That MOU was not reached until July of that same year. It would be illogical to declare that the petition was timely filed in February, but then became untimely when a new MOU was created five months thereafter. Based on these facts, the petition was properly filed within the right timeframe. Furthermore, the county alleges that the failure to list Section 10 on the petition was a fatal error and substantive error that precludes them from processing the petition as requested. Section 10 contains the definition and reference for process of a severance petition or a petition by an employee organization requesting to become the exclusive employee organization of members and employees of the county that are already part of a larger established unit. Section 10 states that it may be done. It does not state that it must be filed under Section 10. In fact, the only requirement contained in Section 10 is that the rules in Section 9, the modification provision, are followed. The form, timing, and process of a severance petition is identical to a modification and is contained within Section 9. Therefore, the petition filed by the Association complied with every requirement in Section 9. The county argues that Section 9, which was the reference section on the petition, does not contemplate the need to recognize a new employee organization. However, this is patently false as Section 9 itself requires that Section 3 of the Employer/Employee Relations Policy be followed. Section 3 is the section in the policy that dictates how an employee organization may become the recognized employee organization. Therefore, contained in Section 9 is, again, it require all, all that needs to be fulfilled in order to become a recognized employee organization. The county then states that Section 9 does not allow for a severance, that it lacks the proper procedures to conduct a severance. However, as I have stated before, Section 10 contains no additional procedures, it contains no additional permissions. It merely refers the would-be filer back to Section 9 and requires them to follow the procedures contained therein. Therefore, if the procedures in Section 9 do not allow severance, Section 10 would not add anything to it. Again, Section 10 is merely a definition and permission that a severance may be filed and defines what a severance is, and then requires the petitioner to follow all the requirements found within, within Section 9, which the Association complied with. The Association's petition clearly states that it wishes to become the recognized employee organization for two units, that it wishes to withdraw them from their existing unit and to create their own. This is by all... not add anything to it. Again, Section 10 is merely a definition and permission that a severance may be filed and defines what a severance is, and then requires the petitioner to follow all the requirements found within Section Nine, which the Association complied with. The Association's petition clearly states that it wishes to become the recognized employee organization for two units, that it wishes to withdraw them from their existing unit and to create their own. This is by all, this is exactly what is required under Section 10, and exactly what was requested. Furthermore, the county argued that it is improper to file two petitions, or two severance requests in a single petition. The county, the Association, did request that both the general and professional units be modified to withdraw classifications from them to create the new unit. However, as you will notice in their arguments, there is absolutely, they will cite to no section that prevents a single petition to accomplish this. A severance petition under Section Nine requires that you determine the appropriateness of the destination, and not that you determine appropriateness or any factors of the unit from which they are coming. Therefore, even if there had been two, so two different petitions filed, they would have been identical. They require that, the only thing that is required to be separate is the petition showing support, they wish to be withdrawn from their prior unit, which of course they were. There was a separate petition for probation in the professional unit, and a separate petition for correctional officers in the general unit. In order to process severance, you will look to the appropriateness of the next unit. Therefore, the appropriateness discussion on both petitions would have looked at the appropriateness of the final unit that PCPOA has proposed. Therefore, it would address the exact same issues, the exact same facts, and the exact same destination. Therefore, it was appropriate for the Association to file a single petition seeking to withdraw members from both units to create a single final unit. Finally, the county argues it is improper for it to bend the rules. As I have stated to you during my presentation, there was no violation of the rules. It substantively complied with every requirement found within the policy. However, even assuming that they did violate the policy in any way, shape, or form, the California Supreme Court has recognized that a technical error in a filing should not prejudice or prevent the form and substance of the matter from being heard. This issue has, this theory has been further used by PERB, the Public Employee Relations Board, on two separate cases. It states that if the error, if any, contained in a petition is merely technical, then it should not prevent the filing or the processing of that request. Here, the only, the only item that is even arguably missing from the Association's petition is a reference to Section 10. It contains all the appropriate steps, all the appropriate processes, follows everything that is required under Section 10 and Section Nine. The county has shown nor alleged any single step in the process that the Association has failed to present. Based on these facts, the Association requests that the board overturn the county's decision to deny the petition under a timeliness and properly filing grounds. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, counsel. Do you, can clarify this for me. Do you agree that the date that you filed the petition, was that the last possible day that you could file it?
Yes, the window period for them is the month of February within this county, and it was filed on February 28th.
Okay, and what is the earliest point in time that you could have filed that petition?
February 1st.
Okay.
That is the start of the window period.
Okay. Now, I'm going to ask you a question with regards to, let's say for instance, I file a motion for summary judgment, and I only include a motion for summary judgment, but I don't include a motion also for partial summary judgment. And the judge only denies that summary judgment request, but he could have given me a partial summary judgment. Can I appeal that?
I guess you'd be able to appeal that.
Because he didn't cite the reference to partial summary judgment, counsel?
I think that's distinguishable from the case that we're dealing with here.
I'm just asking you a question. Can you appeal that?
You could appeal it. Whether or not it would be upheld on appeal would be up to the appellate court.
Okay. That's it for now. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, thank you counsel. It's up to you.
Good morning Chairperson Duran, members of the board of supervisors. My name is Donna Williamson. I'm an attorney with Leibert Cassidy Whitmore, and I'm representing the employer/relations officer in this matter. I first want to say that this is not just a situation where the county is being overly strict about how it's applying its employer/employee relations policy. The law actually requires that the county strictly apply the employer/employee relations policy, and there are some really good reasons for that. First of all, whenever you have competing employee organizations in conflict to represent the same group of employees, what the law has said is that the employees get to decide that in accordance with the EER. And if the employer is administering the EER in a way that favors one employee group over another, or is detrimental to an employee group, you are interfering with the employees' rights under the EER to make their own decisions. And so the county is required to uphold a standard that's called a strict neutrality standard. And so that is why it's so important that we are being very careful whenever we're processing these petitions, so that there is not either the appearance of the county favoring or disfavoring a group, or interfering in some way with rights that are laid out for the employees around how they select their representatives in the employee relations In this case, you did have a situation where you had a proposed new representative of employees who were and are currently represented by Local 39. And the issue of this being just a technical issue, it's actually a lot more significant than that. During the time that this petition was filed in February, we were in active negotiations, the county was in active negotiations with Local 39, who represented, who was authorized under the EER to exclusively represent these employees. There were three bargaining sessions in February, there was a bargaining session in March, and to bend the rules or modify the rules to allow a petition to be filed outside the window period during those active negotiations, not only would have had a detrimental impact on your labor negotiations, but under the duty of fair representation, you likely would have received a, an unfair labor practice charge from Local 39. So it's, it is very important that we adhere to these high standards.
Counsel, opposing counsel has stated that there was an MOU in place, is that correct? Or are you saying that the negotiations were similar to an MOU?
I believe the MOU expired in December, and we were, the MOU had expired on December 31st, 2013, so-
Is there a provision within the rules and regulations that prohibit this filing of a petition during that period of time of negotiations?
I don't believe that's the issue that, that's not the issue that the ERO has with this petition.
Right.
So that is, that is not our issue. And to just be very specific about what our issue is, I'm going to read just two sentences. Section Nine, which is the petition that was filed within the window period on February 28th, is entitled Procedure for Modification of Established Appropriate Units. And the first sentence says, "Requests by employee organizations for modifications of established appropriate units may be considered by the Board of Supervisors," and it goes on to describe the process. When you are creating a brand-new unit, that is not an established appropriate unit. Section 10, which is the Procedure for Processing Severance Requests, the first sentence of that one says, "An employee organization may file a request to become the recognized employee organization of a unit alleged, alleged to be appropriate that consists of a group of employees who are already part of a larger established unit represented by another recognized employee organization." That is specifically the section that this petition needed to cite in order to be a properly cited, filed petition. The petition that was filed with the county on February 28th was filed under Section Nine in incorrect process for what the petitioners were seeking to do. And it's, it's very clear, in fact, I'll just, in looking at the strict neutrality standard, PERB just last year, in a case involving Local 39 and another county, stated, "A governing board must act on a properly filed petition, not on a petition that should have been filed. Otherwise, the local rules are rendered meaningless." And so this is, these are, these are the major issues that the county had with this petition.
Counselor, hypothetically, if this did not say Section 10, but said Section 9A, would you have a problem with the petition?
Section 9A?
Yes.
My EER doesn't have 9A.
If it said that, it's a hypothetical question.
Well, the answer would be no, it would not be a properly filed petition. We are required to process what has been filed before us, and not to interfere in a way that fixes it.
No, no, I'm giving you a hypothetical situation, all right?
Okay.
Let's say that instead of this saying Section 10, it said Section 9A. Would the petition then be appropriate?
No, because there's no Section 9A in the EER.
Okay, you're not getting my hypothetical.
I guess I'm not, I'm sorry.
If it said 9A, and they cited nine, would it be appropriate?
Oh, if they were citing within the proper section, so that that section was properly before the board and the county, absolutely. That would be a technical clerical error.
That's the, that's the-
Yes, now I, sorry.
Okay.
Yes, no.
So that is a tech, in your opinion, that would be the technicality-
Absolutely.
And would that technicality be something that would be, something that would be waivable?
It would not be fatal to the petition, because the petition was filed under an authorized section of the EER.
Okay, but because it's a separate itemized number, with a separate section calling for a separate action-
For a separate purpose.
That's what makes it fatal?
Correct.
Okay, in your opinion?
Yes, this petition clearly does not seek to modify, is not modifying an established appropriate unit, it is seeking to create a new bargaining unit.
Okay, all right, continue.
Just a couple of other points that we have to make on this. First of all, we did want to comment on the window period. The window period is the entire month of February every year. This petition was filed on the last day of the window period. Had it been filed earlier in the, in the window period, that defect could have been corrected, and the county would have been required to accept the corrected petition within that window period, and it would have been properly filed. The county rejected the petition first on, on the 6th of March, and the, the organization filed a, an amended petition asking to bring in Section 10 at that point, and that was on the 19th of March. So that was not, that was not within the window period under the, under the EER. I think the only other comment that we would make is that for, for all of the reasons, we believe that it's absolutely essential to what is the purpose of the ERO, to have the orderly administration of the relationship and the rules between employees and local public agencies. It requires that we strictly adhere to the standard. Yes, the defects can have significant impacts, but the window period is, an annual window period where employees have the opportunity to engage in this process. And so for all of the reasons that we've described in our papers, and what we've discussed here this morning, we would respectfully request that the board deny this petition as filed, both in a defective way, by being filed under the wrong section of the EER, and untimely by being filed outside of the window period.
Okay, questions of the board?
Yeah, just a question. If this appeal is denied, is the applicant able to come back at the next window period?
Yes.
Any other, any further questions? Ms. Montgomery?
What time on the last day of the period was this filed?
It's date stamped, I believe at 12:40, 12:28 PM.
Okay, so 12:30 in the afternoon?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have questions from, or statements from either folks that want, from the public that want to speak on this item? None? Okay. Oh, we have one? Come on up, sir. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Felix Sanchez. I'm not part of the PCO organization, but I am a correctional officer with the county No respect on anyone, I think that this is, all has to do with business, and it's not personal against anybody or any organization that we're linked to, the SO. But listening to this, it sounds like I'm at the DMV, and you can never get the forms right, and there's always an excuse. If you're a part of Local 39, like we are, and in our profession, when we need to be represented, we feel like we don't get it. You know, we've had people that are in this room right now that have 10 years plus, and throughout the years, it's always seemed like that if you're questioned on a certain situation, instead of getting legal representation that we really need, you know, we're told by Local 39, an individual that everyone knows, you may want to start seeking another job throughout the county, or just be prepared to have to leave. And that's where we're, we're kind of fed up with that. We need someone that's going to back us when we get questioned on our work, at work, where allegations are brought toward us, no different than maybe somebody that's out there on patrol. And I'm sure probation, you know, suffers the same consequences. I'm only speaking up because I feel that throughout the years, I've seen it, I've been there, and now it's time to move on, and just based on technicalities. I'm here on my own free time today. I think that it's time for change. We need to be more at a level where we can be feeling comfortable to make decisions at work, where we're not going to be questioned. I could probably continue to go on and on, but I do hope that at the end of this, this petition is not, is not denied or delayed. Let's move this forward for us. There's, you know, 100 and 140 of us, you know, we're all in the same boat. We know what's going on, you know? Come up with us in the day of our work, and you'll see what we're talking about. It's not as glamorous as you may think it is. So, thank you for your time.
Hold on for a minute. I used to represent the Department, California Department of Corrections. I've been in and out of every institution in the state, so I know exactly what you're dealing with. And I will tell you with regards to your DMV comment, if you don't get the paperwork right at the DMV, they give it back to you, and they tell you to get back in line and correct it. Is that, is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Supervisor Duran?
Anyone else?
I just have a clarifying question. The gentleman indicated that they felt that they didn't have appropriate legal representation as it stands. I'm not going to comment on that. What I'm interested in is, when the PCPOA filed the petition, did they have legal representation at the time, who helped them with that paperwork, or was that something that you guys did on your own?
Counsel, can you clarify that?
No, they didn't have legal representation.
And who was that?
It was yourself.
It was yourself? Okay, so you were their legal representative at the time that this was filed?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, then we'll go ahead and go into our closing statements, counsel. And I believe counsel, you do have a rebuttal after the county has their piece.
The county discussed that they have a duty of strict neutrality, and that is perfectly correct. However, they're also required to enforce their rules in a reasonable manner. PERB has found that technical defects in denying cases on a technical defect is not a reasonable interpretation of a county's rules. We're not asking them to take sides in this, we're not asking them to improperly favor any one party over another. We're asking them to look at the simple petition exactly as what it requests, and follow through with what complied with their local rules. Section 10 required, defines the severance to be an employee organization may file a request to become a recognized employee organization of a unit alleged to be appropriate that consists of a group of employees who are already part of a larger established unit represented by another recognized employee organization. It was on to state, "The timing, form, and processing of such a request shall be specified in Section Nine. The Procedure for Modification of Established Appropriate Units for Modification Requests." That is the entirety of Section 10. Section 10 does not contain additional procedure or requirement that it be filed pursuant to Section 10 or under Section 10. It requires that Section Nine be followed. Furthermore, as you will see in the exhibits before you, the petition states, "The PCPOA further requests the county recognize the PCPOA as the exclusive collective bargaining representative for the probation officer and correctional officer-" representative for the probation officer and correctional officer units for purposes of collective bargaining and representation over wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment." While it does not specifically state Section 10, the intentions of petition is clear and it clearly satisfies every requirement under Section 9. As you heard the county, they do not allege a single item of form or procedure was missed in Section 9. All the petitions were properly filed, along with the proof required of support and that it is an appropriate unit was all contained. Nothing required in Section 10 was absent. They have stated that again, the association filed on February 28th. February 28th is indeed the last day of the window period, but is nonetheless within the window period. It appears that perhaps there is some belief that the association intentionally filed at the end of the month. That is not the case. And had this action been planned for years and years, perhaps it would have been very simple to have it filed on February 1st. However, as an association become, or people become increasingly dissatisfied with their representation and they sought to create their own as bargaining went through, and left them with a short time period to complete the voluminous requirements under Section 9 and the formation of an association, they filed as quickly as they could and as soon as they could and within the window period. In conclusion, the petition was properly filed under all sections of the policy. It contained all requisite requirements and requests. It clearly identified itself as a petition to withdraw units from a larger established unit, to put them into their own separate unit, and to create a new recognized employee organization to look after their interests in regards to wages, hours, and working conditions. Based on that, we request that you overturn the county's decision and find the petition was properly filed.
Counsel, I have another clarifying question.
Yes, sir.
Is the action in Section 9 different from the action in Section 10?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
What, what happens in Section 9? What are you asking for?
Section 9 contains the procedures for both a severance and a modification. Section 9 as a modification entails the modification of an already existing unit which withdrawing classifications from the existing unit would be.
So Section 9, in your opinion, is strictly for modification?
No, Section 9 is for both Section 9 and Section 10, for both modification and for severance.
But the action in Section 9 is directed to the modification, not the severance?
It's a difficult question to answer. Section 9 itself is entitled after modification, but Section 10 requires you to comply with Section 9, therefore the procedures and the requirements applies to both.
I would agree, Counsel, that it, that it is difficult and I'm having difficulty because I, I, I get what you're saying, but the fact that it's, it's separate and this is what I have to work with, that's what makes it difficult for me, so.
I understand.
Okay, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you.
You may proceed.
I just have a couple of closing comments. First of all, it is, it is true that the processes that are used for Section 9 and Section 10, as far as how the requests are processed, are the same and they cross-reference back to Article, you know, 3 and Article 7. There's a lot of cross-referencing in the EER. But the authority to move forward requires that the petition be filed under the proper section. And the, the Section 10 is rendered meaningless and has no purpose to be in your EER if it doesn't fit this particular situation. This is exactly the situation that Section 10, "An employee organization may file a request to become the recognized employee organization of a unit alleged to be appropriate that consists of a group of employees who are already a part of a larger established unit represented by another recognized employee organization." And from the legal authority that requires our strict neutrality to process a petition that does not cite to the proper authority to move forward and then to allow it to be amended outside the window period when you had a 28-day window period, really raises risks for the county that you are taking an action that is detrimental to one unit and favoring another unit in violation of your rules. And it is our position that, that is not what the legal standards require. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions to the Board on this, for County Counsel? You have your closing statements or your rebuttal?
The county discussed that if, what the association contends is the fact that Section 10 would be rendered illusory and have no actual effect. I'd like to clarify, a majority of counties or number of counties throughout the state lack its own specific severance section. And due to that, PERB and the Public Employee Relations Board has found that a severance petition will be, will be followed or processed identical to a modification. Section 10 merely codifies that decision by PERB by stating that an association may file a severance petition and then confirms PERB's previous decisions that a severance petition may be filed in the exact same form and process as a modification petition. Finally, again, the county has addressed its duty of neutrality and it states that it cannot take any action to the detriment of another association. That is not technically true. Anytime you have a modification or a severance or a decertification, it is to the detriment of an association. The mere fact that you would approve a decertification or a severance or a modification does not render you in violation of any state laws, so long as you do them in accordance with the rules. The Peace Officer Association has complied with all the employer relations policies and rules as they are, has committed no violations, and has properly put the petition before you to have their own unit created with their own representative to properly look after their interests as they feel is not currently being done. And with that, we ask that you overturn the county's decision denying the petition on timeliness and form basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. All right, we've heard both sides of the argument. We'll bring it back to the Board for discussion.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question for our County Counsel. You mentioned that, that this petition would be detrimental to one unit in favor of another unit. Can you explain that a little bit for me, please?
Our, and just to clarify, I just want to make sure that we're not going into the second question?
No.
And we're still staying focused on the first one?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, opposing Counsel is, is correct in his description of that. If, if the petition moves forward and if it moves forward at the appropriate time filed appropriately and it is approved, it would have the effect of pulling a large number of employees out of the Local 39 bargaining unit and constituting a new unit separate from Local 39, which would be detrimental to Local 39 as a bargaining unit. And that's why it's so important that it be done properly.
And again, they can, if we were to deny this request, they've got six months that they can file another petition.
Correct.
So this isn't fatal to their, to their cause, like it would be if I denied, you know, in open court or in Superior Court, if I threw a case out because of a timeline, they still have the right to bring forward their, their request at a later date?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? Supervisor Montgomery?
Just as a clarification in response to what you just asked, if, if this were to come back at a future date with a petition that was filed again, would that have to happen in February? Is that always the timeframe? It's just beginning of February to end of February?
Yes, the, your EER provides that the window period is the month of February of any year. Section 7 states that.
So PCPOA could come back February 1st and then we would have 28 days to sort through any issues?
Correct.
Or 27, just coming here, I believe?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Do we have a motion one way or the other?
Well, Mr. Chair, it seems we're kind of specious up here, but it seems to me that it would be in the best interest for the PCPOA to move forward next year and make sure that the paperwork's correct. And it wouldn't be this question before us today. And so I would deny the appeal.
Okay, do we have others that would, that feel different or, or the same way?
Did we get a second?
Do we get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And, and, and before we, before we vote, I'm going to just say this, that this has no reflection on the substance of what the, the bargaining, proposed bargaining unit is, at least in my opinion, wants to do. You know, representation is a personal thing and, and this has nothing, you know, my, my vote on this has absolutely nothing to do with your ability and your rights to, to seek other, an alternative means to get your representation whatsoever. So we have a motion and a second.
Just under discussion, quickly, if I may. The, I appreciate the gentleman coming forward and stating his reasons as to why he'd want to separate and create the new unit. And it, it may be that both the probation officers and the correctional officers feel that they have run their course, exhausted their existing means, and it may be justifiable at this point for you to create this new entity that you think would represent your interests. Please take note of the fact that county staff has provided you with what their objections would have been on the second question. And find yourselves, because clearly it's, it's the, from what I'm hearing, it's, it's almost the invitation of the Board that, that you refile this, this question for representation, as you put it, for proper representation. In the interim, I would hope that the folks from Local 39 are engaging enough to want to work with you to perhaps obviate that need. Whether or not that comes to pass, I guess we'll see, but, but hopefully, at least through this process, you've been able to see what it is that you would be up against in terms of the county looking at your petition favorably or unfavorably, and you'll be able to spend a little bit of time addressing that in advance as well. So I'd just leave you with that bit of advice, perhaps.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstention? Hearing none, that appeal is denied and, and we'll move on. So, thank you very much, Counsel. Very good argument, very good presentations. Thank you. So we will now move to our first board item, our department item, minutes of July 8, 2014. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstention? Hearing none, no, no opposition. Motion carries. We'll now move to item number 6, Facility Services, Environmental Engineering, Kevin Bell.
Good morning, Chairman Duran, members of your Board. I have with me this morning Heather Knutson, and she's an Associate Civil Engineer in Environmental Engineering. And she's going to talk about the Auburn Jail lift station project and, and our request to award the project.
Good morning, Chairman Duran and members of your Board. We are here to request, to your Board first, award the bid for construction of the Auburn Jail Lift Station Improvements Project Number 4855 to Vinsaguera Construction from Sutter Creek, California in the amount of eighty-four, $844,088 with a previously budgeted net county cost. Second, approve a resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services or Designee to execute a contract with Vinsaguera Construction upon approval of County Council and Risk Management. And to approve any required change orders consistent with the County Purchasing Manual and Section 20142 of the Public Contract Code in an amount not to exceed $945,000, which includes a contract amount of eighty, $844,088 and an approximate 12% contingency. For background, the Auburn Jail Lift Station was constructed in 1985 to provide sewer service to the Auburn Jail and Juvenile Detention Center. The wastewater generated at these facilities contains items not found in normal wastewater streams, including clothing, plastic bags, and other debris that gets wrapped around the pump impellers. In order to keep the pumps operational, staff is required to manually lift the pumps from the wet well and remove debris on a weekly basis. In addition, the existing wet well is deteriorating. The improvements include insulation of a new mechanical grinder, replacement of pumps and the deteriorating wet well, increased emergency storage, and upgrades to the electrical control and odor control systems. On May 6, your Board approved the plans and specifications and authorized staff to solicit bids for the project. Bids were opened by procurement staff on August 26. Vinsaguera Construction is the apparent low bidder with a bid in the amount of $844,088. The engineer's estimate for the project was $1,200,000. A bid tabulation sheet summarizing the five bids received is included as an attachment in your package. At this time, staff recommends your Board take the requested actions to award the bid to Vinsaguera Construction and approve the resolution authorizing the Director of Facility Services to execute the contract. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the Board? Any questions of the public? Okay, we'll bring this back for Board Action.
No approval?
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no abstention. Please note that Supervisor Euler has left and there's only the four of us, he's no longer with us. Motion carries. Thank you. Great, we'll now move on to item 6B and that's donation of a mobile water purification system. This ought to be interesting.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. Dave Atkinson with Facility Services, here to ask your Board's consideration of two requested actions this morning. First is to accept a donation of a mobile water purification system with a value of $49,950 from Rayleigh's and add this equipment to the fixed asset list at no net county cost and to authorize the Chairman to sign a memorandum of understanding for the use of this equipment between Placer County and Rayleigh's. Earlier this summer, the county was chosen to receive a donation from Rayleigh's of a mobile water purification system. This system will be used to provide safe drinking water to local communities in times of emergency or pressing need. This system is essentially a trailer-mounted water treatment plant with the capability of providing 20 gallons a minute of drinking water. Facility Services has the necessary licensed water operations staff as well as the necessary auxiliary equipment such as generators and towing equipment to maintain, deploy, and operate this equipment. In the event that this equipment is used inside the county, this will be done in close coordination with Placer County Office of Emergency Services as well as the Division of Environmental Health. In the event that there are requests for this equipment outside the county, this will be done in close coordination with Placer County Office of Emergency Services to ensure compliance with all the applicable mutual aid requests to ensure that the appropriate requirements for recuperation of the, the cost for the operation of this equipment are in place. Wanted to personally thank Rayleigh's for recognizing Placer County with the, with this donation and also to let you know that the cost for the acquisition of this equipment is being, is being paid for by Rayleigh's and that the minimal maintenance cost to keep this in a ready condition of about $2,000 per year will be absorbed by the Facility Services budget. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of the Board?
Mr. Chair, I see there's four other counties that have received this donation. What was the impetus? Why did Rayleigh's decide to do this? Was there anything?
My understanding is that this donation is part of a settlement agreement that Rayleigh's has with several of the district attorneys in California for some, some other issues that they had.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery?
Dave, thank you. Fascinating item and I will definitely be voting in support of this because I think it's a great idea, but I'm intrigued a little bit by the language in your report. It says, "The Department of Facility Services has agreed to be the custodian of a mobile water purification system." What does that mean, really?
Essentially, OES, Facility Services and Environmental Health got together, decided that because of those unique capabilities that Facility Services has, we would essentially, we would be the, we would take ownership of the piece of equipment. It would of course be at the behest of the, you know, the county as a whole, but it will reside in Facility Services as far as our fixed asset list and our ability to operate and maintain it.
Excellent, you answered my question. Thank you very much.
Hey, any questions of the public? Okay, I'll bring it back for Board Action. Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Not hearing any opposition or abstention, the motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item seven, Health and Human Services Consultant Contract, Marbut Consulting, Homeless Needs Assessment and Action Plan. Jeff Brown and Graham Canaus.
Good morning Chairman Duran, members of the board. Jeff Brown, your Health and Human Services Director, along with Graham Canaus, Assistant Director. We're here with a recommendation that you approve a contract with Marbut Consulting not to exceed forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to conduct a homeless needs assessment, and make recommendations regarding a future action plan to address homelessness within our county. As a bit of background, Placer County is not unique in dealing with homeless issues. Homelessness is a national issue. As you can see here on any given night across America, you have 600,000 individuals that are homeless. California is disproportionately impacted by homelessness. We have 22% of the homeless population, only 10% of the total population. Most of that's most likely due to our high poverty rate, our high cost of housing, and generally our good weather. Statewide, we've seen some improvements in the population of homelessness, actual decrease nationwide and across California since 2007, although in the last 18 months, that number has started to increase again. And then I just bring up that we're actually seeing in urban areas, a decrease in homelessness across the United States, and an increase in rural areas. This is probably most likely due to a decade of investments by HUD in housing addressed to homeless individuals in urban areas. So we last did our homeless count in 2013. We're required to do these every two years. This is a point in time count. We do one day in January, and it never captures the full population. It's just hard to identify everyone and find individuals that are willing to be counted and interviewed. But some people would estimate that it might capture half of the homeless population that you might have in, within your county or city. You can see here the number slightly less than 600. That number is held constant over the last five years. In 2009, 2011, almost exactly that same number. And this slide just highlights some of the challenges that the homeless in our county experience. You can see 10% of our veterans are homeless, comprise our total homeless population. You can see we have high rates of serious mental illness, chronic substance abuse, and domestic violence. About two-thirds of our homeless population are male, and I highlight that about 78% are singles. And that number has actually increased over the years, and it really points out to the success that we've had in really housing homeless families and children. So in 2004, the Placer Consortium on Homelessness and Affordable Housing, of which our department is a, is a member agency, developed a 10-year plan to end homelessness. Now, we ultimately weren't successful in ending homelessness, just like every municipality across the United States, but we actually made some significant improvements. And some of these are highlighted here on the slide. We prevented hundreds of individuals on the verge of eviction from becoming homeless through our local homeless prevention and rapid rehousing programs. We secured 35 Section 8 vouchers for veterans in our community. We worked with AMI Housing to secure permanent housing for seriously mentally ill individuals that are homeless. We increased rental subsidies through our Shelter Plus Care Program, and also through our permanent supported housing programs. We increased shelter beds in both Tahoe and Western County. We increased safety net services, which are really key through the Medicaid expansion, and to really provide primary care and mental health services for individuals. And we developed a few critical units of transitional housing for people coming out of the hospital that don't have a place to go. And then a couple other notes. We worked together as a collaborative to really access HUD housing, to really promulgate services across our community. And finally, we increased our outreach efforts and worked with Nevada County to create a regional homeless continuum of care. So looking at just three categories of housing, emergency shelter, transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, in the last 10 years, the total numbers have gone up about 46%. As you can see, there's a decrease in transitional housing. That was really a policy decision by the federal government to really, you know, disinvest in this strategy and put more resources towards permanent housing. And unfortunately, a number of items, we were very ambitious in 2004, and a few items we weren't able to accomplish. We did not develop a multi-service center. As I mentioned before, we weren't able to increase transitional housing. Those were previous goals. And then we also had the goal of implementation of a housing-first model. It's a harm reduction model of moving people directly into housing. We were not able to move forward on that. In summary, I will say that while we've made great strides since 2004, we still don't have sufficient affordable housing for low-income families, and certainly housing for homeless, and we still have some work to do.
As a result of that, we're bringing forward, to your board for consideration today, a contract with Marbut Consulting. And Dr. Robert Marbut has about 30 years of experience dealing with the homeless, doing research on them, and in terms of improving the continuum of care for the homeless and housing options through communities all across the country. He will be mapping out a full inventory of the homeless services and housing options here in the county, both what are provided through us, also through the cities, and through our many community providers. In doing so, he will be identifying gaps in services, really looking at what we have in place relative to capacity and how that aligns up with the homeless population, and the key sub-populations within it, both in terms of our Auburn area in the county, up in the Tahoe area, and also in South County. Also looking at those sub-populations that Jeff touched on relative to those impacted by serious mental illness, substance use disorder issues, domestic violence, veterans, and others. As part of this process, what we want to do is first recognize that the county is but one of many players in this effort. So as we move forward, the consultant will be working through a community-based process. This will be a county-led effort where we are really facilitating a community conversation. The consultant will be working with a homeless advisory group, and so we'll, we'll pull that together. That will include community providers, it'll include a number of stakeholders throughout the county, also business, and we'll be there in law enforcement as, as well. The, the key relative to this in terms of what we expect to get back is really a set of recommendations that will allow the county, cities, and really the broader community to have a policy conversation about how best to align available resources with the needs of the homeless relative to different areas within the county geographical area. It will also include recommendations related to a potential South County-related project that is being led by a nonprofit in the community. Finally, this will look at both what's in place today for 2014, but also as we look ahead, some projections relative to needs and capacity, where we may want to go, looking five and 10 years out for the community. So the final assessment that will be developed by the consultant will be brought back to your board, and there'll also be a community summit that the consultant will host that will allow as much input as possible from all the key stakeholders, and really the broader community, to have awareness about what's in place here in Placer County, through the cities, through our community providers, and how we can all collectively begin to move forward over the course of the next 10 years relative to homelessness in the community. And with that, Jeff and I are available for any questions that you may have, and we would recommend your board's approval of this contract.
Any questions of the board? Jennifer.
Jeff and Graham, thank you for the presentation. One of the questions that I did have, and you addressed it a little bit in the presentation, was regarding the Housing Now model. And that while it was something that we were working on, the issue we came up with was finding a housing that was affordable, that we could actually move people into. What I would suggest is when we go through this analysis, we reanalyze that and really look at the costs of what it takes to not house people versus paying more for housing than we might want to, but still accruing some cost savings to the taxpayers and our constituents in Placer County. So that's just a suggestion for moving forward on this. I think we should reexamine that model. The other thing is, I've had a number of people contact me recently about this whole tiny housing model that you're probably familiar with, and so I would just encourage that we take a look at that as well. I'm not suggesting that it's something we end up doing and that we actually settle on that and make it part of our, our overall housing analysis and model, but I think we should certainly take a look at, at that possibility.
Yeah, we can include both of those with our work with a consultant.
Excellent, thank you.
There's also a growing body of research related to exploring different models of housing that the consultant has great familiarity with. He's been part of that effort across the country, and that will certainly inform this effort and some of the recommendations that will be developed.
Great. Are there members of the public that would like to comment on this? Please come forward, and if you could state your name and just roughly where you live, that would be great.
Perfect. I'm Leslie Brewer. I'm the Director of Advocacy and Services for Placer Independent Resource Services, and I'm also Chair of the Placer Consortium on Homelessness. We started this group 18 years ago, 12 years ago. I was part of the group that wrote the 10-year plan to end homelessness. We had a lot of big ideals and dreams, and we talk about affordable housing, and there is a huge lack. And we still see the need for transitional housing in this county because it's so hard to get people so they have an income and they qualify to live in permanent supportive housing without having time to figure all that out. We've done a lot of work. I, I'm proud of what we've done. There's still a lot to be done and accomplished. We are the continuum of care for HUD. We merged with Nevada County years ago. That's how I first met Mr. Brown. We're not going anywhere. We're staying here. We're working with things, and I just want us to be acknowledged. There's a lot of energy with new groups that are forming in Placer County that we've talked with, and we try to get them to become a part of us and to come work with us. So I keep hearing about, about the new groups, but I just wanted you to be aware that there is existing energy and determination here from other agencies, and I'll let someone else speak about what we have formed. Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think that this is, you know, the intent of this is to go in a different direction.
No.
I think what it is, is basically the 10-year plan 1.1, to build on the next step. So, so I see some synergy here between
Yeah.
...the existing folks and, and folks that may have some different ideas.
Yeah. No, and I'm thrilled too. Thank you. I get nervous when I'm up here. It's been a long time.
It happens every year.
But I want to thank the county for doing this because ultimately, getting it on our agenda and on minds and talking about it has been our longtime goal forever. And although I'm not thrilled about homelessness and the people out there that are homeless, I'm thrilled that we're looking at it as a community because this is what's needed to be done for a long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Duran, supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I'm Susan Farrington. I'm the Director of the Sierra Foothills AIDS Foundation, and I'm also the present Chair of the Homeless Resource Council of the Sierras that acts as the continuum of care for Placer and Nevada County. I'm here to speak in favor of the idea of having a needs assessment done in our community. As the continuum of care, we are hard strapped to find the funds necessary to do a comprehensive, data-based assessment of where we stand and where we need to go. So I certainly would appreciate your support in this effort, and I do want to reiterate what my colleague Leslie said. It's been absolutely wonderful to have your support and the support of the Placer County Department of Health and Human Services in our efforts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Susan. Hello, Susie.
Good morning, gentlemen, ladies. How are you all today? My name is Susie DeFosse. I'm the Executive Director of the Gathering Inn, which provides homeless services for the South Placer area or any Placer County resident. I've been talking for years, the funnel going into homelessness is huge, and the funnel coming out of homelessness is very, very tiny. Anything we can do to open that funnel and get more people into housing benefits the communities, benefits the homeless, and benefits this county. Studies that I've done, I've read, I've seen, I've talked about, for every person we can put into housing, and a dollar we spend on housing, we're saving the county and the, and the taxpayer's about seven to nine dollars. So I'm very much in favor of having a study done that will bring light to what's the best solution for this county to make sure that we are able to put more people back into housing. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Susie. Anyone else? And I will conclude before we bring this back to the board by saying that I had the privilege of being able to sit with Dr. Marbut, along with David and Jeff and Mr. Canaus, and Dr. Oldham for about three hours, and picking Dr. Marbut's brain about a, about a bunch of different opportunities that he sees here in, in Placer, as well as his experience in addressing homelessness in different diverse communities, and using a lot of different tools to, to address the issue, and I'm very impressed with the experience. And, you know, I don't know if any of you read Jim Collins, but he has a saying of getting the right people on the bus in order to get things done, and I certainly think this is a step in the right direction to help us move to the next step in addressing the homeless issue here in the county. So that being said, I'll bring this back to the board for action.
Move the approval of the item.
Great, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The motion carries, and we'll move on to our second item here, 7B, Adult System of Care, Placer County Mental Health Services Action Plan. Ms. Bowman, would you be honored to be joined by our Chair?
Good morning, Board Members and CEO and Counsel. Morning, Bowman, with the Adult System of Care. Really delighted to be here this morning to request for you to adopt the Placer County Three-Year Mental Health Services Act Plan and expenditure plan for the next three years, 2014 to 2017. In 2005, Placer County received funding and implemented services under the state-funded Mental Health Services Act, and since that time, Placer County has used this state funding to expand intensive mental health services and crisis services to people with severe mental illness, and developed evidence-based prevention programs to reach those who are at risk of mental illness. In addition, these funds have supported housing projects, staff and provider development, and facility and technology improvements. This funding has managed to allow these services to remain stable during the most recent downturn, economic downturn. The Campaign for Community Wellness is a community-based steering committee overseeing the implementation of the Mental Health Services Act Plan here in Placer County, and they are very pleased with the results of the investments made through this plan. The CCW goal is to support the traditional and non-traditional mental health systems in Placer County using innovative, collaborative, culturally competent, and consumer-guided approaches. It supports the continuation of these programs and looks forward to working collaboratively to continue to improve services and to support, and supports for all people in Placer County experiencing mental health issues. The plan was vetted with the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, our local stakeholder steering committee campaign, as I just said, and posted for 30 days to receive public comment. A public hearing was held by the Mental Health Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board on August 25th, and no comments were received as a result. So this plan, I'll just give you the highlighted version. This plan includes direct services for people in order to get 24/7 response. We expect to serve 720 people in the next year, 950 in crisis follow-up services, and evidence-based peer support for over 3,000 people. In addition, we'll be able to provide housings for persons with mental illness, workforce education and training, infrastructure support, and prevention and early intervention services to probably over 4,000 people. The Mental Health Services Act revenue is significant, $12,921,000, and the accompanying expenditures have been included in the department's fiscal year budget for 1415, and the budget, and in our, in our final budget amount. There are no county general funds required in this amount. There will be additional dollars drawn down through the federal financial participation because we do draw down additional federal dollars, but, but no county dollars. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend approval of the 1417 Mental Health Services Act Plan.
Any questions of the board? Seeing none here. Any questions of the public? Great, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board.
We have one.
We have a motion? Oh, we do have one. Please.
Thank you. My name is Barbara Bassana. I'm the interim Executive Director for Kids First, the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Placer County, 124 Main Street, and 11960 Heritage Oaks in Auburn. I just want to speak- I just want to speak in favor of the plan and the subsequent contracts that will be following this adoption. Speak first on the leadership of the county, first of all, with the Board of Supervisors, the CEO, Dave, and your counsel, and also the process that went through in compiling not only the plan but the contracts. It takes a village to raise a child and promote the families and mental health in Placer County. With this process and the compilation of the community, the Campaign for Community Wellness, Placer Community Foundation, and different partners of nonprofits throughout the county, I think Placer County takes a leadership role and the lead in making this happen in a positive way. Noted is the great staff work done by Jeff Brown, Richard Connect, Jennifer Maureen, and also in compilation with procurement services and the contracts and how they pull everything together. Everything's done well with the intent of the evidence-based practices, contract with Nancy Callahan to help the nonprofit partners and other integrated services so that that can be strong when we move forward, not only in the county, to determine what we have accomplished in accomplishing our goals, but setting a standard throughout the state. I just want to commend the board and Health and Human Services for the work that they do and being a partner within Placer County to help, in our part, stop abuse neglect and provide safe and healthy and nurturing environment for children's and families. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Great, we have motion of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hearing no opposition, no abstentions, the motion carries. Thank you, Maureen. We'll move on now to Item C, Adult and Children's System of Care, Mental Health Service Act Contracts, and two budget revisions. Mr. Connect.
Good morning, Chairman Duran and Board members. Richard Connect with the Children's System of Care. Now that the plan for Mental Health Services Act in Placer County is approved, we bring forward for your review the proposed contracts which would put the plan into action. Over the last 10 years, tens of thousands of Placer residents have been, had their lives positively impacted by these agreements that we would bring for your review today. Based on the community approval process which Maureen mentioned, overseen by the Campaign for Community Wellness, a request for proposals was developed and released for these services, and notification was distributed to 109 agencies, of which 79 reviewed the ERFP. A total of 19 interested agencies responded. The evaluation panel reviewed the proposals and recommended the award of these 12 agreements listed in Attachment Number Two. RFP results and rankings are included in Attachment One. The six additional contracts listed in Attachment Three comprise services requested by the Campaign for Community Wellness and are of a specialized nature. Each of these contracts will run for 21 months, beginning October 1st. Expenditures under these contracts total approximately $14.7 million. Of this amount, $6,522,728 is included in the current year's budget and in the accompanying budget revisions. The remaining $8,180,283 will be included in the department's 1516 requested budget. These contracts are almost all exclusively funded by state dollars. County general funds of approximately $200,000 are combined into two of these service agreements for the ease and facilitation of the vendors. I want to thank, for just a moment, Brett Wood and the procurement team for helping shepherd the department through what was a very complex RFP process with all of these various service areas in the single RFP. His team was outstanding. I would respectfully recommend your board to approve the awards and associated contracts and the budget revisions necessary to draw down the additional state revenue, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the board? When they're giving us money, it doesn't sound like there's any debate there. Any questions from those in the public? Okay, then we'll go ahead and bring this back to the board, and I believe this is going to call for a roll call vote as it is a budget revision.
Second.
We have motion of the second. Roll call vote, please.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes. Alrighty, then we'll now move to our last item here, Item D, Adult and Children's System of Care Contracts, Mental Health Services Act, Fiscal Year 14 through 16. Mr. Connect.
Thank you, Chairman Duran. In fiscal year 1314, the Adult and Children's System of Care provided specialty mental health services to more than 5,200 residents. These mandated state services include the timely provision of crisis assessment and referral services, outpatient services, and hospitalization and other forms of acute care. Many of these mandated services are provided under contract with our community partners throughout the county. In our desire to bring the most fiscally and clinically effective services to Placer, an RFP was released and issued for the crisis and outpatient portions of these services. Notification of the RFP was distributed to 103 potential proposers. A total of five interested agencies responded to the request. Evaluation panel recommended award of adult and crisis response services to Sierra Mental Wellness Group. Evaluation panel determined that Sierra was well-qualified and presented a proposal which addressed the needs for services by Placer County transitional age youth and adults and demonstrated the agency's experience with this population in recent years. The same panel recommended additionally award of the children's mental health services to EMQ, Families First. EMQ is a highly regarded agency known for its innovative and pioneering approaches to mental health care. This contract will also support much-needed psychiatric services and the capacity to deliver services in collaborative and co-located ways in our Tahoe area. Revenue and expenditures for fiscal year 1415 include $1,279,107 in federal and state monies and approximately $270,000 in county required general match, and it's included in the department's 1415 final budget. The remainder will be included in the department's 1516 requested budget at a future date. I would recommend your approval of these awards and the associated contracts, and be happy to take any questions.
Any questions of the board? Hearing none, any questions of the public? Bring it back for the board for action.
Second.
Motion of the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, no abstention, the motion carries.
Thank you.
And that, ladies and gentlemen, concludes our Board of Supervisors meeting today. We do not have any closed session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Summit.
We are adjourned.